Okay, I call this special meeting the Fremont County Board of Commissioners to order. So you will all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McFaul.
Present.
Commissioner Bell.
Present.
Commissioner Grantham.
Here.
County Attorney Jackson.
Present.
County Manager Bryant is absent today.
Okay, thank you. Move on to approval of the agenda. We have one item.
Mr. Chair, that's the only item I see. That's what we're here for today, so I moved for approval of today's agenda.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bell.
Hi.
Commissioner Grantham.
Aye.
Commissioner McFaul.
Aye.
Motion carries.
There is no old business, so we jump right into new business. And what that is, is the extension of the Fremont County Local Disaster Emergency Declaration. This will be resolution number seven. This again is a renewal of the emergency declaration because it was due to expire at midnight on Friday. And we won't have a meeting before that, so that's why we're having this special meeting, and it is to extend it to February 22nd, 2021 of midnight. With the emergency declaration, I've said this every time that we've renewed this, is that it allows the county to be able to tap into federal and state funds. There's one whereas in here that's pretty pertinent of that. Colorado law provides for declaring local disaster emergencies to assist local governments in responding to and recovering from emergency events, including epidemics and emergency epidemics and pandemics. I think that's pretty important. That way we can serve the people of Fremont County. It also helps serve the municipalities within Fremont County and all Fremont County constituents as a whole. Commissioners, any further discussion?
Do we, I see we have a couple of our officials with us this morning. I have nothing until maybe they get up to speak.
Okay, Mr. Grantham. Okay, I would ask, we have Michael Kroll, our emergency manager, and we have Kayla Marler, our public health director. If you guys would like to take turns and come up and tell us how these, how this emergency declarations affects your departments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So first of all, and I don't know who all has these, but if you're just so.
I do have one.
Thank you. If you don't want them, then give them back. I just found those this morning. They're the last three that I have for how we kind of operate in emergency management, and that covers everything. There's a tab for everything in emergency management. So that gives you a good guide. One of the things with the emergency disaster declarations, and this comes from CRS 24-33.5-709 for the specifics of it, and that tells you when a local disaster may be declared. And that local disaster may be declared only by the principal executive officer of a political subdivision. It continues to go on and give you more ideas of why we need to declare a disaster and how that can be done, made verbally. And then who needs to record that, which in this case, of course, is the county clerk and recorder, city clerk, or authorized record keeping agency. And then these disaster declarations need to be passed to the emergency manager and then up to the DHSEM field office for record keeping. Activating our emergency disaster declaration activates our emergency operations plan. In this case, that opens up all the policies and procedures and agreements that are in place in the EOP so that we can react and respond during any type of disaster. Some of these are in there for emergency spending authority, resource management, procurement, and jurisdiction overtime policies. COVID has been a very long running process, and it's been very different outside of the normal realm, and everybody's adapted to that, including the president, FEMA, all of those higher up agencies well above us. So in the request for the disaster declaration, that opens up a lot of doors for financial help for everybody in the county. The county, all the municipalities, the citizens. Doing this, it says, we need this disaster declaration because we're at our capacity. We can't do any more locally, and we need help. So that opens the door, and we can have such things as what Kayla and I have set up with Mako testing. Because we don't have the staff to do that testing day in, day out, six days a week. The state funds that. In our call this morning, Kayla spoke about renewing those with the state with Mako. If we don't have those disasters, that disaster declaration in place, that tells the state, okay, they're fine. They don't need this assistance anymore, and they'll take that second look when Kayla says, hey, we want to keep them going. We need to keep them going because of, and the state will go, well, you don't have a disaster declaration, so do you really need our help? Because it sounds like you guys can manage it at your level. And that goes for so many other things, but that's one case in point that Kayla brought up this morning with those renewals of the contract. And that's a biggie, as you know, because the prison system, we have those rising cases, so many cases coming out of the prisons, getting into the community. So besides that, the county was working with PA, Public Assistance, for our non-congregate shelter. I don't remember. I think that was paid for by CARES, but that also works into it. When public assistance is being asked for, you have to have that disaster declaration. As I said, the congregate shelter, we were looking into that. The CARES Act, that was a separate animal all in its own with the funding and how it had to be spent, but that disaster declaration had to be in place to make you eligible. And I'm saying you as the county as a whole. It also makes those resources available to us, like State Patrol, if we need traffic control. Colorado National Guard, like we have helping out at Valley View. I got them set up. Hildebrand. So that opened those doors, and the governor made that happen. So we have that in place with the disaster declaration. Also overtime, and it really didn't play into it much for many that I know of, but that's another piece that plays into it. For the public assistance piece, to get that reimbursement for that 75-25 split for public assistance. There is a class that covers this. I tried to bring this to Fremont County last year. We were going to do it in March. Of course, March, everything got screwed up. We know that. It's C402 for Colorado, and it's a G402 class. That's the FEMA version of this class. Colorado, we call it the C402 because it's more specific to Colorado and how they operate. So last year, here's my list of 14 folks in leadership roles that wanted to take that class. So in that class, these things, I pulled out of this class so that everybody's on board, same page. I would like to bring this class to Fremont County this year and get everybody on the same page again. Kristi Coleman, my regional field manager, has agreed to do that in a hybrid situation where she's going to teach, and we can have folks virtually and in the room, because the room's going to fill up pretty quick with 14 with our social distancing guidelines. But the things you see in those books, the things I pulled out of this class, like I say, this is pretty well verbatim of what this class entails so that everybody gets that message and has a better understanding of why we do those things we do.
I think you mentioned one thing right off the bat. It's also in the resolution was the capacity of the county and the resources. This pandemic started above the capacity of the county and the resources. So that's why we've been in an emergency declaration since the state filed or declared an emergency declaration as well.
And we, you know, we jumped on board right away when the state did, and we were right there with the state, and we've kept it renewed so we can keep all those resources, the funding doors open. It's worked out very well because I can't even imagine where we'd be behind if we hadn't have jumped right on board when the state did. But it's, it's been working so far.
Thank you.
Michael, thank you for all of your hard work and your leadership role over these last, what, 10, 11 months now. As we've been dealing with all of this, the county really depends on you as well as our public health director, Kayla Marler, to kind of help guide us through all of this. I just want to recognize that and say thank you.
I appreciate that. And I got to be honest, I couldn't do what I do without public health. I have a great group of girls. I call them guys all the time. They don't get offended. I have a great group of girls to work with over there, and I can always depend on them, and they have totally opened my eyes to the ways of public health. And it's been a true pleasure to work with them. I do appreciate all your support that I've had over the last whatever, yeah. I've kind of lost track when I actually started. I know it was sometime in December when we started getting the information from DHSEM and FEMA of, hey, this is what's going on. You guys need to be prepared, which is when I started working with Sarah and Emma when she was here of, hey, we need to get a plan for this. Which we did. We cranked it out in a weekend, and we got approval for the COVID response plan. So it's these things that we had in place that we were already being proactive on instead of reactive. And those girls are great. I can't thank them enough. It's continuing. Kayla stepped in, and she just kept working away. And, you know, the phone calls, seven, eight o'clock at night, early in the morning, you know, there's something that those one o'clock wheels are turning. But it keeps us ahead of the game, and we have, we've been lucky. We could have had a lot worse, but these girls deserve a huge pat on the back, too. I can't thank them enough.
And that was a year ago December. I heard on the radio this morning that the first case reported in the United States was today, a year ago. So, yeah, thank you for that. Anything to add?
Yeah, ditto on all the kudos.
Thank you.
Quick question. You brought up the DOC and what's going on out there in regard to the virus. What is your office's role? Do we have any role out there on the other side of the fence with emergency management or working to? I mean, I think, you know, a fantastic job is being done out here in the community. But is that completely the state's responsibility when we get behind the fence, or do we have any role in that?
So behind the fence, it is their responsibility. All of those inmates, all of their staff members, that is their responsibility. But as a whole, I work with Shane Stucker, who is the emergency manager for all of DOC. Work with him, talk with him. Was he on our call this morning?
Not this morning, but he was earlier in the week.
Monday. He was on that one. I couldn't remember this morning. I did. I lost track of time this morning with the phones ringing and everything else. And Chris Mongar, he's another one. They are always in contact with my regional field manager as well. We go to trainings together. When they had the explosion out there, I assisted them because I was on the ground here and they weren't. So we do work very closely together. We do trainings together. He's calling me, I'm calling him. We email back and forth. We're keeping up on the numbers, their processes. We've had questions from the community. We've had questions from other providers going, are they renting out whole blocks of hotel rooms, whole floors of hotel rooms for staff? We get those questions answered. If there's rumors, we squash those rumors. We have a very, very good working relationship together. And then each individual facility has their emergency manager, but they just report up to Chris and Shane, and then it comes to me. And then, like I say, we get Kristi involved as well. So there is a lot of communication and work. But yes, traditionally inside their fences is their responsibility, but like I say, as a whole, they communicate very well and work very well together.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. No, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
We'll ask Ms. Kayla to come up and talk with us. Good morning.
Good morning.
Push that button on that mic. There you go.
It's green. I really don't have much to add. Michael kind of went over everything. A couple of things is he did mention Mako testing. You know, one of the, when I called CDPHE and was like, hey, we need help. We can't keep running like we're running. They immediately asked, well, what resources do you have in your county? They wanted to immediately know what the county had put into place. And so, you know, of course, getting Michael on the phone, and he's like, you know, we, we're rolling out our EOC. They went in and extended the declaration, and so those were conversa, or those were questions that they did have. And in order for us to qualify, we had to have those things in place at the county level. Since mid-October, Mako has tested 11,308 individuals. Around the end of October and November, when we seen our biggest spike, they were doing roughly around 350 tests a day. That is something that with my two nurses, there is no way that we would have been able to do that. So definitely looking to extend their contract and keep them here. We do not pay for anything. They are completely self-sufficient. They bring all their tests, all their PPE, which is another great thing because it's not getting, we're not having to use as much PPE, and it's not at, you know, our expense. So definitely, we would be lost if we had Mako, especially now that we're rolling out the vaccine. I don't know what we would be doing.
I think that's important to note, too. You said the other day in a meeting, you have two nurses that rolled out over 400 shots in the last event. And, which is amazing right off the bat to start with, so thank you for that. But had they been having to give the test as well, it just wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have worked logistically at all. So I get the significance of that.
Yeah, so I mean, we haven't, it's been nice not to have to worry about the testing that's being taken care of so that we can concentrate on community outreach. We can concentrate. We were finishing up flu vaccines at that time, too. And now the girls have done nothing but been concentrating on implementing the flu vaccine. And so also with that, I just want to give you a couple of numbers. Of course, with this declaration, we open up funding. We have received ELC funds. We, that will last for two years. We received $598,659. With these ELC funds, we are able to hire a part-time nurse, which is listed right now. We've also hired two COVID specialists, and what they do is one does nothing but educate the community on COVID and how to prevent spreading of COVID. And then our other one is doing data entry, and she's also doing contact tracing. And so we would never have been able to fund and provide those job opportunities if we did not receive that COVID money.
ELC?
ELC. Oh, and I didn't even read my laptop. I can email you the.
Let's see. I'll do a search and see if I can happen to find it because I'm not sure either.
I was going to bring my laptop, and I didn't.
I'm guessing emergency is the E.
Epidemiology and laboratory capacity. There you go.
I didn't hear that, did you?
Epidemiology and laboratory capacity.
That's a mouthful.
That's why we stick with ELC. Also, we received COVID CARES money, roughly around 70,000, 75,000. We are up to receive COVID immunization money, which is separate from our initial immunization money that we received from the state. And we're receiving roughly 166,000. Before I came, they, right at the beginning, received OPPI, 35,000, and then an additional 34,000 off of our FIP grant. This money is utilized for nothing but COVID. We have not had to dip into much of our general fund, public health general fund. We have been working off of these grants, which is fantastic. When I came on, I learned that we have a freezer that, a vaccine freezer that's about to go, and those are not cheap. So it would be really hard for us to, for me to approve, you know, purchasing a four, $8,000 vaccine fridge if we didn't have these kind of funds. So these funds have been utilized for things like that. And for us to continue to roll out COVID vaccine, flu vaccine, we got to use some of our money for that as well because it was preventative for COVID, so.
That's roughly with rough math, over $800,000 just in those few things that you mentioned.
And a lot of it we use, of course, for PPE, you know, Michael's possibly moving to another location. So he has all of that emergency preparedness stuff, so he's probably going to take it with him. So we had to go in and purchase stuff for ourselves, for public health, and so we were able to do that. A lot of it has went to personnel. We have created two full-time positions, which we know is, helps boost our economy here because that money stays here. Also, we took our assistant receptionist from part-time to full-time. And then we'll be hiring on a part-time nurse. So, yeah, our big thing impact is, is the funding.
Kayla, do you know how long Mako will be here and continue to do those tests?
For sure, until the end of March. I finally brought it up to the state, and they're like, oh, we probably should probably have a plan. Because I'm needing to prepare on, we're needing to prepare on our side if they leave. And so they're looking at extending them till at least like the summer, late summer time. But for now, for sure, until the end of March.
That's great news. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Just the same question I had for Mr. Kroll as far as your interaction with DOC and your department and how, what that looks like. What is, I mean, you guys are doing a great job, and the community numbers are evidence of that. And inside the fence, not so much, and so maybe they should be putting you guys in charge over there on the other side of the fence. So how does, how does your interaction play with CDPHE and the state and DOC, et cetera?
Same way, same thing that Michael had mentioned, you know, we have our contacts. DOC is a tough one. They're tough, and so we are, we've been told behind there, that is not yours. They're, the state and the federal government is taking care of them directly. And when I first came on there, like for, as a public health director, there was not a lot of communication. I couldn't even get a nurse on the phone, and so opened up that communication. They have any kind of concerns or anything, you know, they reached out, same way here. We have, this will give you a little bit of an example. We have a situation where they're not wanting to give the second dose to their contracted nurses. So those nurses are calling me wanting the second dose. Well, where you got your first dose is where you got, you got to get your second dose. And so tried to get ahold of the facility, could not get ahold of anybody at the facility, so we just take it on to CDPHE. And then what they do is they get us a contact, but then they also use their reps to make sure that the situation gets fixed.
Why in the world, they're driving this train, and now they want to force the second vaccine somewhere else for contract nurses?
Yeah.
Why?
And so my solution to the situation, when I was visiting with them last night with Scott, was, you know, if they don't want to give that first dose to their nurses, send them to us. We'll do the first and second dose. But we, you're going to be completely messing up the system if you're not providing that second dose. So Scott was going to get on it with CDPHE and also give me a contact for that, so.
Scott's the incident commander of this whole thing from CDPHE.
Yeah, and you guys have made, we've all made a lot of waves, so I mean, he's answering my phone any hour of the day, night.
Well, I tell you, I think it's funny, Kevin, to your point, is it's funny that the state insists on being left alone, and you don't handle it, and they're kind of not running the train very well, as you say. And, but yet they insist on adding those numbers to our Fremont County numbers, which we've battled with them for 10 months about. It skews everything, and it's frustrating how on one hand they do it this way, but on the other hand, nope, it's part of your community. So the frustration is real. I'm there.
And actually with this, I'm even a little bit more frustrated.
Well, and then we also found another situation, and so we're working with the state. I mean, we just bring it up to them. And not only do I send that email, but literally when we're on those Zoom meetings, I'll be like, Scott's Kayla Marler, and he's like, we're going to reiterate it again, you know, on, and then we also run it through Kristi with, you know, Michael's team. And the thing is, is we have, if you look at how much vaccine we have allocated to Fremont County right now, it's quite a bit. But the thing is, is DOC is not getting their patients in SIS quick enough to show that those vaccines have been utilized. So we found, we looked, and they still had, I think it was December 21st, they did some doses. They're still not in SIS. So it's showing that Fremont County is sitting on those vaccines. So I am working with the state right now to say, hey, you all need to take DOC out. Don't put them in our community numbers, and do that separate.
So if we were able to accomplish that, where would we be at on the dial?
So on the dial, we are still in orange. And I tried to have that conversation last week to move us to yellow. And they said, we can have that conversation this week because the governor was going to make some changes to the dial and the metrics. Well, now it is in his office, and we are waiting to see what those changes are. We don't know what those changes are. So pretty much CDPHE is not even having a conversation with us or any county about moving on the dial. We technically with our numbers, we're still in the orange. But we are advocating for us to move to yellow. Let us know if we can help.
We're behind you on that, yeah. Actually, I was going to fire off an email. I just didn't have time yet. But I want to say the same thing we said to Michael. Appreciate you guys and all the work that you're doing. Please pass this on to your staff. You guys are doing a great job collaborating with the hospital, collaborating with Valleywide, getting these vaccination events happening. There's one happening today that you guys are doing out on the west end in Howard. You've got a list of over 200 people up there. I believe you're giving shots, too. So you're doing what you can with what you have, and we'll keep advocating for more vaccines so that you can help whoever needs the shots, because there's a lot of people lined up still. Couple days ago, you had over 3,000 on the list. I don't know what you're up to now or where you're at. That's just the 70 and over crowd and, and the first responders and whatnot still. So there's a lot of other people that are interested in getting that vaccine, vaccination without the hard work that all of you guys are doing. It wouldn't be happening like it is. We've had a lot of great compliments on your events and how they're running so smooth, and they were impressed, so good job.
Thank you. Yes.
Double down on that. I mean, it, great job. It's, I appreciate you letting us know about your picking up the slack for the state. I seriously doubt that there's any reciprocation there, but thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. And I do want to know, when this rolled out, hospitals were supposed to take care of 50% of COVID immunizations. Health departments were only supposed to take care of 10%. Well, in Fremont County, I can't just allow that to happen, and so neither can my girls. They're like, let's go.
Good job.
Let's go. So we will get everybody vaccinated. That is my promise to this, or we have failed. And so we, we just, we are too good of a team.
We know that your heart truly is in what you do, and so, and you're living, eating, and breathing nothing but working on these things 24/7, so thank you. and breathing, nothing but working on these things 24/7, so thank you. We do appreciate you.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, any other comments or?
I do have a couple of comments. Mr. Chair, first of all, I would just like to express my personal opinion that COVID has been nothing but a disaster, nothing but a disaster. It has real, true, hard costs to Fremont County. There are federal and state dollars that this emergency declaration allows us to tap. Yes, they are all tax dollars, but we all are paying into federal and state tax dollars as well as paying our local taxes. So, I think it's only fair that we also are able to bring home some of those tax dollars here to Fremont County instead of making our local folks pay full freight with only local tax dollars. So, that's the comment that I have, sir.
Good comments, thank you. Commissioner Grantham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I would agree with Commissioner Bell's comments, the, this has been a disaster and nothing but a disaster, but it is certainly elevated, at least in our mind, and in fact, when we look at certain responses across the country, and we see what goes on even in our own state and some of the bigger cities, then shouldn't be surprised that I'd be highly critical of the current government up in Denver and their response, and sometimes their one-size-fits-all, and then trying to wedge us into certain parts of a dial, and trying to make it seem like we have this local control situation, but then forcing some things down upon us and putting the carrot on the stick when it comes to some of these funds, and I get that, that's how these things work, when we, when we need help to address some of the things that they require, and then they tack on some of the restrictions that apply to our, our local folks and our businesses, and actually, we have fantastic numbers here in Fremont County, and that's to the people's credit, and that's to the credit of folks that we just heard from here at the podium. I look at this declaration, and I'm not going to go through everything that I think are overstatements or things I disagree with in it, because the bottom line comes right down to what the chairman quoted early on in this, because I highlighted that same whereas, whereas Colorado law provides for declaring a local disaster emergency to assist local governments in responding to and recovering from emergency events, including epidemics and emergency epidemics and pandemics. Then another one a little farther down, whereas Fremont County's response to the outbreak continues to be of a cost and magnitude far in excess of the county's available resources, including financial resources. All the things that I think might be overstatements that maybe are necessary for us to, to put in a declaration like this, and I was joking with Commissioner McFaul yesterday about, it's a, it's a short window for me, it's a small window for me to be able to say, well, I'm the new guy, so I get to say some of these things, and so, I'm going to use that to death. So, I'm the new guy, and so, I don't know what's going on. But, in this case today, when we look at this declaration, is my, you guys have voted on this several times already, and you've got to look at this over the last year, and I've got to follow it at least tangentially, and here I am now having to cast a vote, and based on those two wherethes, I will vote yes on this. I begrudgingly, because I think Fremont County is doing better than, than this, but we have to have the help, and so, we're not a wealthy county, we're not Weld County, we don't get to say whatever we want and do whatever we want, and there's no financial repercussions. Here, we have financial repercussions on a government level, so, thanks again to you guys for your hard work, and we'll, we'll pass this again, and we will hope that we see an end in sight sometime soon, and go from there.
Thank you. All right, entertain a motion.
Sure, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Fremont County Local Disaster Emergency Declaration Extension. This is Resolution Number 7, and this will extend the declaration that will now expire at midnight on February 22nd of 2021.
Has been moved and signed to approve Resolution Number 7, extending the emergency declaration, disaster declaration, to expire midnight, February 22nd, 2021. Any further discussion? I would just like to say right quick in this discussion part, can't give enough thanks to our departments for the work that they're doing, but I've also got to thank the businesses and the people of Fremont County, they're doing an excellent job of following the protocols that we are, that have been passed down to us, so they're doing a great job, so I want to thank them, too, and anybody watching or listening, pass on our gratitude to all of those folks, too, and we're fighting for you, I say, that's all we can do.
Absolutely.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Grantham?
Aye.
Commissioner McFaul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
No further business before us, we are adjourned.